The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the very public protest against one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isnak.
Here.
Alderman Sevnik.
Yeah.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Rappella.
Yeah.
All are present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is the report of department head, staff, and consultants. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevnik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through L. Oops. H and Communications I through L.
Second.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I could either discuss this under Parks or discuss it under Planning Commission. The City of Manassia had an opportunity to purchase some property near the locks. And the council, I think I can say this now in closed session, was pretty much unanimous that we proceed this, but there were staff and the administration opposed to us purchasing this property. I made it very clear that we have to stop looking short term all the time in this community. We have to look long term. And especially this evening, earlier, we had a meeting showing the new Water Street corridor. And by not purchasing this property, I think it's a big mistake. We did purchase the property closest to the water. Most people won't even know that. And then, to me, it would tie in perfectly across. The Park Department, Planning Commission, and staff has been saying we need to focus more on Jefferson Park. We have been. A lot of money has been, millions have been put towards next year of redesigning and doing things with Jefferson Park. If I said Smith, sorry, I meant Jefferson. I told the mayor, mayor called me, I had a time, and I appreciated it, that they weren't going to go in that direction, and I told them I wouldn't fight them on it. But I just want to say this, I think it's very shortsighted of us not to purchase this property because we were given first right of refusal to have that property that might not be given to us in the future, and we'll lose that opportunity. And I'm not just going to sit by and not let my community know that we did have an opportunity because I can just hear it now. I'm going to hear people say, you know, it would have been nice if the city would have bought this piece of property over here. And they're not going to know that we did have that opportunity, that we had an owner come to us and say, here's a piece of property, I would like to first give you the first opportunity to purchase it. So the Parks Department said, no, we don't need it. We want to focus on Jefferson Park. And the Planning Commission also indicated there was no need. But you know how politics is. When there's staff and when there's administration that doesn't want something or wants something, that's how it happens. I'm going to leave it at that. I don't want to make this into a major debate or anything, but I'll tell you, I really think that if the property is not scooped up by somebody next year, that we need to take a very serious look at this and put it in our CIP budget.
Any other discussion? Alderman Rappella.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll go along with Stan on that topic. I mean, we've all had land next to us at some point, if we're a homeowner, going, boy, I wish 20 years ago I would have bought that land next door to me. And then you didn't. We've had many examples in our city where home people have, they had a nice woods next to them, you didn't buy it, and then it got into a house, and they go, boy, I love to have a net woods next to me, no neighbor. And they were shortsighted and didn't purchase it. And I think this is another shortsighted idea by the city and the powers that be because we don't have to do anything, just cut grass. We could do it, leave it alone for 10 years, it's just grass. And that's it. And then when we get around to it, we can work on it. We've got a couple parks in our city, Clinton Park and, Clinton Park and Scanlon Park that are, there's very little playground equipment on them, very little, and they're not used anymore. Maybe 40 years ago they were, but not now. Those are two parks. We can even, if they were set up for some individual named after, easily put a plaque there or something that this was Scanlon Park or this was Clinton Park and leave it at that, still honor them, but put a house on there, at least an opportunity for somebody to buy that land and put a house on, habitat houses even. I just think it's a bad idea for the city to not purchase the land over on the locks, on the lock side, on the north side. We've already purchased the land on the south side of that street, of that big white house, so people can walk that trail and they don't see, oh, there's a house there, where's the trail go? So now they can take that trail and get along all the way up Water Street, and it just makes sense to have the land across the street there. We could have a park maybe 20 years in the future, but at least we own the land. We're not going to get the land in three years, going, boy, that land's been sitting there for three years, nobody's going to buy it. Somebody's going to buy that land within the next year. And we won't have a chance. So thank you very much. So I hope we buy that land. Thank you.
Alderman Grotty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll too comment on this since I do serve on the Park and Rec Board as an alderman representative. This was a very hard decision for us to not want the land as part of the Park and Recs funding. I'm all forward for the city. If they want to buy it, they can buy it. I think that's the right opportunity, but don't put this in the Park and Recs budget when we don't have the money. It wasn't for the ARPA funds, Jefferson Park would still be sitting there. And there are tons of projects and tons of areas that we have to spend money in the Park and Rec Board that this land would sit empty, empty, empty. Understand, sure, cut the grass and do whatever you want to do there, but then do you add another person to the Public Works Department because we're just cutting all this grass? They're tight too. So we did struggle a lot with this decision. If the city wants to buy it, let them buy it, but don't stick it on the Park and Rec Board's budget.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. As part of our first public comment tonight, I'd like to invite the chief up to introduce our new officer that was sworn in this afternoon.
Thank you for having us. I'd like to introduce Officer Kate Lynch. Kate graduated from Fox Valley Technical College this past Friday. A little bit about her, she was one of our CSOs, began with us in May of 2022. So the reason why Kate stood out and has been a shining star with our department is she's taken on a number of different responsibilities, a number of different tasks, and she's always willing to go above and beyond to help our department members as well as our community. So today, we had the pleasure of swearing her in with assistance of Clerk Newman. And tomorrow, she actually starts her field training program, so we're excited to have her. Kate, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, so super glad to start as a patrol officer, obviously as a CSO, super happy, but obviously being here, I'm happy to try and make a difference in the community, obviously. I grew up in Bonnewell, Wisconsin, ended up moving to Appleton, and then finding Manassia is kind of my other home away from home. I've learned to love the area a lot, and I've really gotten to know the department, a lot of the city members, obviously as a CSO, I was always up on their floor, talking to them, and it's been an honor being able to meet everybody and can't wait to really get to know everybody else in the area, work with everybody in our community, so appreciate it.
Congratulations, Kate.
Thank you.
At this point, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, if you could come up to the microphone. Larry, if I could just have you press the button there. Thanks, Larry.
I'm Red No. My name is Larry Rudeen. I live at 393 Willow Lane. I'm requesting that the city do something about the abandoned property on Willow Lane. I've talked to my neighbors on Willow Lane, and we all have the feeling that we've been trying to do something with this abandoned house for the last 20 years. I know that it's, the house is in probate, but I found a state statue that gives the city the opportunity to condemn the property and maybe move the probating attorney to do something with the daughter of one of the, she is the daughter of Lloyd, and she evidently is holding up some disposition on getting this property sold or raised. So I thought maybe this alternative might push things along, and hopefully by April 1st of next year, maybe we could have something resolved. But I appreciate the city doing something, trying something again. We haven't done anything in quite a few years that I know of. Thank you for your time.
Larry, did you turn something into the clerk then as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Larry, what was the address again?
350, my address or the?
No, no.
350 Willow Lane.
Is that the?
The house that was?
That's the house that came across the lake in 1987, 85, someplace near. Yeah, it stood on a barge for two and a half years at the end.
Did you pay the tour?
Pardon?
Did you pay your $5 and take the tour of it?
No, did that happen?
Yeah.
No, I missed that. Really? Was it worth it?
I didn't do it.
So we'll look into it and get back with you, Larry. Thanks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight?
Hi, my name is Bethany Gingler. I live at 210 Water Street, and I just wanted to say thank you to the city and to our council members for taking some action regarding some of the issues I've been having with developer Asher Jacobson and his property acquisitions on Water Street. I know that the city kind of has their hands tied, and there's not a whole lot you can do, but I just wanted to say thank you for the little actions that you already have done have made a tremendous difference. For an entire week now, I've actually had peace in our neighborhood, and then seeing the beautiful plans for Water Street Corridor tonight really gives me hope for our community. So thank you so much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
First of all, I'd like to thank Stan for responding to my correspondence and placing the Water Street algae problem on the Department of Public Works' agenda. I want to talk about the algae bloom, but first, the property at the end of Broad Street is an important acquisition for the city. The parking in that area down there, any given ice day, through the success of the city's trestle trail and the Park Department's having the trestle trail in the system has just been a success story from the very beginning. But along with that, we have tremendous amount of parking issues down there. We have some limited parking, but we need to expand that area, and as property becomes available, we need to step up and acquire that. We may not be able to build a parking lot at this time, but we can always add a little to it. But I think if this was in any other area, the social economics play into this situation, and a lot of people down there, they don't realize they have a voice, but if it was a different area, people would be much more vocal. So I do agree that we need to purchase this land, any of this land in this area for future needs, especially for parking. The algae bloom on the Fox River and the Lake Winnabeka watershed are natural occurring every year. From the Taco Street Bridge to the Fox Locks, many changes occur in the last 25 years. From the Taco Street Bridge heading to the west of the locks, the first property was the American Can Company, and was later known as Fort James. They drew a lot of water into their operation through a closed loop system. So they were causing a current by pulling water out of the system and putting it back in the system. And next in line was the Manassia Utilities, who drew water from the U.S. Government Canal on Water Street and discharged it through a nine-foot drop into the natural occurring Fox River. Just to the west of the utility was the Whiting Paper Mill, opening in 1882 and operating until 1998 for 116 years. The Whiting Mill was very unique, and they operated a sluice that ran underneath the mill, which ran their hydropower since 1882. It's a very large sluice that runs through there, and when they closed the plant, the DNR made them put a pipe in there so there would be some water flow in that area. I don't know if that's operating with the Gobi situation, but I think the city has control of that property. When I worked there, that flume used to be cleaned out twice a day because of the amount of debris that would catch in there. So if that pipe is open, causing some flow in that canal, it should be looked at and probably cleaned out at times. The drop from the Whiting Mill to the natural river again was about nine feet. And at the very west end of the U.S. Government Canal is the first lock on the Fox River. It's a drop of nine feet, eight inches into Little Lake Buttermore. The Manassia Lock has been closed for about 10 years. So what I've described is all these companies and a lock and the moving of water through the canal is what we've had in the past. Right now, essentially, the Government Canal is a cul-de-sac with no flowing water. The situation this summer has got much worse than it has in the past. This summer, we've had three major outbreaks of algae, and each time we have an algae outbreak, the water quality with the algae bloom leaves a residue, and it's not, the water isn't as fresh as it was before. Back in June, I sent the mayor a proposal that would help aerate this water in this canal since the first outbreak, and the algae bloom in June was very severe, and the problem actually started then. The problem we have right now is a combination of all those algae blooms. It's not just the situation that has happened now, but it's the fermentation in that canal throughout the summer. And I appreciate that I reached out to a few aldermen about this issue, and you will be approving a city budget shortly, in the next few weeks. And please put some funds into the budget for this issue. And we saw how wonderful the Water Street Corridor is going to be. As Stan said before, after a lot of years, this is going to come to fruition. So I guess some people have adopted the phrase, "Manassia, your place on the water." And if that's the case, we have to take care of the river and put some dollars into a fund. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening?
My name's Vince Knuth. I live at 46 Lawson Street. Forty-two years I've owned the property, have a nice tower in my backyard, put the trestle bridge in in my way for my boating. And now this year, with the low water and drought conditions, I can't get the boat up and down the river. So, and the locks have been closed. And if this city can't figure out how to make the water move through that canal, cut a hole in the top of the locks, get together with the DNR, so let the water run through. It's a public hazard to have that kind of crap going on in that canal. It should be taken care of, shouldn't have to put up with it. The trestle trail, how come the Nina Trestle Trail is right next to the railroad tracks? And the trestle trail downriver from me is in my way for boating or anything else? But then when carp shooters wanted to come up with all the lights on it, 3:00 in the morning, you think a spaceship landed outside your house to light up your whole house. Anybody else live on the water, want one of them boats driving up to your shoreline with all them lights? I don't know how they got the okay on that, but I've had enough of that. The park, the sewage plant in the residential neighborhood. The sewage plant should have been over at Arrowhead Park. I don't know how it got put and expanded down by, in Dogtown. That's ridiculous. You just screwed the values of everybody that lived down there that could have had a nice property on the lake. What are you thinking about? Who are benefits from all this stuff? Is this politics or is this, who's getting bought off? I got a ton more to say, but I guess I got that off. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the minutes? Alderman Sevnik.
It's interesting that you asked that question instead of if we want to separate.
I know that you don't want to separate it. You don't want to do them together, so.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anyways, at this time, I'd like for us to approve the minutes of 10, 2 of 2023.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Do we have a motion for the Administration Committee recommendations? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the 7.55% increase from network health and continue with our four offered plans under the newly proposed premium share pricing structure as recommended by the Administration Committee.
Is there a second? So motion in a second. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Just a comment.
Sure.
It was extremely beneficial to all of us to get this information early this year to allow us to digest it, process it, evaluate it, and come to a decision, and I think it works out better for the budget process as well. So I hope we can continue that in the future.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, A zero.
Item three, do we have a motion for the Board of Public Works' recommendations? Alderman Sevnik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, the Board of Public Works is recommending to the Common Council payment to Northeast Asphalt for the 2023-05 Street Construction and Rehabilitation. This is for Third Street Community Way in the amount of $196,223.93. This will be our second payment.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. If I could ask for unanimous consent to hear Laura, I'd like, you know, when we do this, like the people in the gallery or on TV, they're like, what was that $200,000 for? So I just would like for her to explain this project and the multiple projects that it affected.
Yes, thank you. So the payment, the current payment would be for the recent items would be the milling on Plank Street is one of the target items on there. There was curb and gutter on Community Way, and anything that kind of closed out the reconstruction on Third Street, Boren's Court, and Conamack. So you're correct that there are a number of roads that are included in with this overall project. So there will be more payments forthcoming for the asphalt paving on Plank Road. So like I said, the milling portion was paved, the asphalt has not yet, and then also the asphalt on Community Way.
And the total of that is roughly, what, $60,000, just under?
Yes, just under for the Plank Road portion, yes.
And also for the public, and I said this during the Board of Public Works' meeting also, Plank Road was an awful, awful road. I mean, you felt like you were in a rodeo driving down that street, and it is a state road, but we could not continue to have our vehicles at the Public Works Department, but just my vehicle going down that street in the condition that it was. And so therefore, we decided to pave that because the state is not going to do anything with that road until 2028?
Correct.
That's a long time from now, and we couldn't wait that long. And this is really a Band-Aid. It should be good for at least 10 years plus, but, and it came in at really, really good prices for the city.
And I actually just got an update here. Once we see the asphalt get added on, we have the quantity, we just don't have the payment assembled yet. It's coming in about $55,000.
Okay, so.
So actually less than we had anticipated.
Right. So excellent. And I know that both Alderman Grotty's spoke very highly of this particular road because they use it quite a bit. I know, Randy, you do. But I mean, it got so bad that I'm very proud of the city that we took these steps because to wait until 2028, even our plows, I don't even know how you'd be able to plow that, and now it's really nice. And now it's really nice.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is a recommendation from a special Board of Public Works meeting. Do we have a motion?
Well.
Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a special Board of Public Works meeting on this matter, and it was unanimous. Therefore, I'd like to recommend to this body to approve the Racine Street Right-Way required for the Racine Street Road construction project.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of September 29th through October 12th, 2023, in the amount of $1,243,443.22.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is a liquor license for Quick Trip. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the liquor license for Quick Trip Incorporated, doing business as Quick Trip Number 1099, Holly Schrader is the agent at 901 Racine Road for the term of October 16th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is property acquisition for 90 Broad Street. This is what was talked about during the public comments. And just so everyone knows, you can make a motion to direct staff to acquire it. If you did wish to do that, you don't have to take the recommendation of Plan Commission and Park Board. And with that, Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since I'm on the Planning Commission, I'll make the motion to not purchase the acquisition of 90 Broad Street, including the parcels 2-00279-00, 2-00279-03, and 2-00279-02. Finding the property is not needed to meet the goals and objectives of the planning efforts of the City of Manashia.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Sevigny, you were first.
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at how Tom worded that. Finding the property is not needed to meet the goals and objections of the planning efforts for the city. Boy, that is the worst statement I've ever heard. Not, not that it's coming from you, Tom. But I think if anything, we should have been planning, and this should be our goal, to purchase this property. I think it's very short sighted that we continue to look at things on the short term and not long term. Even if we had to borrow for this property, it's for our future. It's for the next 100 generations to be able to have this property for our community. And I think it's a mistake to not purchase the property. Obviously, it's going to be very hard to sell this because you have both an administration and a staff that doesn't want to deal with this at this time. And I just feel it's very short sighted. And you heard my talk before, I'll leave it at that. But I would ask, really, I'm asking my colleagues to not end this tonight because we're not going to have this opportunity in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I love the word echo. I'll echo those thoughts from Stan. You heard my spiel earlier. I still think the city needs to purchase it. We've got money somewhere. Doesn't have to come from the Park and Rec Board, but we got money somewhere. We have no problem finding money to do a lot of other things in this city. We should be able to come up with some money to buy that land and don't have to use it right away. So, thank you. I hope we don't, whatever, vote this down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a hard run like I just discussed, but I would like to keep it in the city if we can come up with some type of other motion here to get it back on the drawing board. My question is for the city attorney. And maybe Sam might know this too, but is there any type of intimate domain on that property, on that land or anything, that we can get it a lot cheaper than what they're offering it to us at? Is that something we can look into? You don't have to answer it now because I just put you on the spot, but I just thought, you know, we thought of that at the Park and Rec Board, thinking, hey, is there types of loophole here that, not a loophole, but another avenue that we can get this and then have it? You know, I agree that we should kind of have it, but we just, I just don't want it on the Park and Rec Board's agenda or budget.
Alderman Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. I share the sentiment that my colleagues do, that we should be thinking in the future and what are, what's the growth areas we want for our community. And I think passing up on this would be a mistake. I respect the autonomy of the various boards that made this recommendation, and I respect my colleagues that serve on each of those. But if there was a way that we could find money to make this purchase that is outside of Park and Rec, because we want to respect their wishes, I think it would be a good, diligent thing to do for good stewardship for the community and just, I think, thinking law and all.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you explain to everyone here why this process began in the Park Board and went to the Plan Commission before coming before us tonight?
Certainly. So this was in closed session for basically staff to look at the possibility of this acquisition. And ultimately, with internal discussions, because of how narrow the property is, it would not necessarily make sense from a development standpoint. If you had a much larger or square development site, it could make sense. So we had kind of looked at getting the recommendation or consideration from the Park Board. And the Park Board is actually the ones that recommended this go to both the City Plan Commission and the Common Council for consideration for denial. The Plan Commission by Wisconsin State Statute is required to make a recommendation, and that is a recommendation to the Common Council, the government body, before any type of property acquisition for the use of public lands. So that is why, again, taking it through the Plan Commission and getting their opinion on how to proceed with this property acquisition was appropriate.
And so the Plan Commission is required to do this by state statute to render a decision on whether or not it would be their recommendation to purchase a piece of property, for the city to purchase a piece of property?
Correct.
Okay. And it started in the Park Board because?
Because looking at, at the site, again, as I just stated, the likely best use of the property in its current form is as parkland.
And that's mostly because it's situated next to a piece of property owned by the navigational authority that the city, that is part of the Water Street plan to be developed as a possible playground, park area.
Correct, as well as, again, the frontage is very limited. It's only 79 feet on Broad Street.
Okay. And the park, I wish, I wish Director Zaket was here to talk more about the Park Board. But there, they have the following findings. I'm just going to read from the memo that's in our packet, that the perceived initial cost and their wish to not fund it out of Parkland Dedication Fund or other park funding. The Park Board did not see development funds available for this particular site until 2030 or beyond. And if development comes at a deference of other projects in the CIP, the Park Board cannot support that. And we all know that they already have a long list of projects in their capital improvements plan, from shelter and utilities at Hidden Pond Park, all the way to things that we're still waiting for at Shepherd Park, the new playground there. So there's lots of work on their plate already. And if I recall from the Park Board minutes, there was also conversation about at what point do we need to add more staff to manage and take care of this parkland? Director Schrader, in, as part of the Water Street Corridor, was this particular property called out in the Water Street Corridor plan?
No, it was not. There was some green space on the lock site directly to the west of this site.
Okay, thank you. Given the, the findings and the concerns expressed by the Park Board and the fact that this property was not called out in the Water Street Corridor plan, I am willing to accept and support both the Park Board and the Plan Commission's recommendation, also understanding that, and asking the question, at what point do we, as a landlocked city, draw a line in the, in the sand and stop, stop continuing to take property off the tax roll? Thank you.
Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. For the public, you just were told that this is such a small lot or whatever. Well, it had a house sitting on it. It might be 79 feet. I think the sta, what is the standard lot, like 42 feet for a house?
Building.
Yeah, okay. Not only that, but it also has access to another street. What was the name of this?
Lock Street.
Yeah, Lock Street on the other side. So you have two, two possibilities of entrance to it. And not only that, I wish we were able to show a picture to the public what we're talking about, because actually, there's a peninsula out there too, with trees. It's beautiful. We'll never get an opportunity to have that property if someone else buys it. I think it's a huge mistake. Short-term thinking, again, up here bothers me. I agree with what Ted said. Maybe they didn't want it in the park's budget, but there are other funds such as the, in community development, the, help me out, my God, where's my brain? The Strong Neighborhoods?
Okay.
Because there's, we put money in there, we have it, so if we wanted to purchase properties. But is that only for housing? Okay, so it's only for housing. Well, I probably wouldn't have voted for it if it was only for housing. All right? We keep being told that whenever we need to acquire a piece of property in the city, yeah, well, anyways. I think I'm seeing some of the people in the gallery, they're shaking their heads like they know that property. And I think they also see that that's, it's a mistake that we don't purchase this property. But it also ties in with Water Street Project, because we just bought the piece of property across the street. Fox Crossing, you won't believe that I'm going to say this. Fox Crossing got it right on the other end of the trestle trail, because they purchased additional property on the other end of the trail and created a larger park. That's what we should be doing here. So anyways, I, like I said to the mayor, I'm not going to fight this. It might be a losing battle, but I really think it's, fifth, sixth time I've said this. You got to think long term. Thank you.
Okay, seeing?
Clarification there?
Sure.
Could the clerk read back the motion on the floor, please?
Move by Alderman Tom Grady and seconded by Alderman Ted Grady not to purchase the acquisition of 90 Broad Street, including parcels 2-00279-00, 2-00279-03, and 2-00279-02. Finding the property is not needed to meet the goals and objectives of the planning efforts of the City of Manashia.
Welcome. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
There is a tie.
I just commented that it better not be a tie. Being with our debt service fund and our borrowing, I cannot see borrowing the kind of money that we need for this, so I'm not in favor of purchasing this property at this point. If it was donated to us, maybe, but I would not support an outright purchase at this point with the other items that we need to continue working on in this community. So I'd be voting no. Can I vote no yet? Yes, I'm sorry.
He said no. I know. No.
It doesn't let me. It doesn't let me vote, so.
The tithings that moved.
Anyhow.
The mayor broke the tie. For the public, can I have?
Motion carries five, four.
Sorry. Go ahead, Stan.
So basically, we're not purchasing the property. The mayor broke the tie, saying, basically, he agrees with his staff and his appointees, all of his appointees on the Planning Commission and the Park Board.
That would be correct. Item four is the property easement acquisition for Racine Street. Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Becky. Or Tom.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move, Council, the motion to approve the Right-Way acquisition at 419 Racine Street, parcel number 1-00315-00, 500 Fifth Street, parcel number 1-00304-00, 515 Racine Street, parcel number 1-00300-00, 600 Racine Street, parcel number 1-00505-00, 600 Racine Street, parcel number 1-00480-00, and 701 Racine Street, parcel number 1-00581-00. And the permanent, permanent easement, limited easement at 3, 635, I'm losing it here, 6th Street, parcel number 1-00392-00, required for the Street, Racine Street Road Construction Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Sevigny. The addresses were 419, 500, 515, 600, 601, and 701 Racine Street for acquisitions, and 635 Sixth Street for a. 635 Sixth Street for a permitted limited easement. You had 600 twice rather than 601.
Oh, okay.
So, just so that it was listed correctly in the other discussion.
Too many numbers.
Alderman Sevigny.
So, I was going to explain again to the public why this is happening, but I think it would be better if Laura did that.
Thank you, Alderman Sevigny. So, per state statute, the Plan Commission, before action from council, does need to consider and report any land acquisition that would be used for any street or public right-of-way. And thus, these specific parcels were brought to Plan Commission for recommendation for council approval. And the parcels that are listed, there are six of them, and it purely is the corner at an intersection, and it's in order to install ADA accessible sidewalks and detectable warning fields. And it is very small pieces of property, but in order to accomplish that accessibility, we are looking at acquiring those. And then, as you saw earlier in the agenda, the plat was on there that went through Board of Public Works, and that's for any temporary easements and other items related that are temporary in nature. So, the Plan Commission did recommend for approval for council to approve those acquisition parcels. And then, the permanent easement would be for drainage. The grade of the sidewalk is such that it is going to create a standing water area behind the sidewalk on private property. So, to remedy that, we are proposing to install a drain that would collect that water, and we need an easement over that drain. And this is all for the Racine Street Road project from Third Street to Ninth Street that will be done in 2025.
That's what I was going to add. You knew that. So, just so the community knows, Racine Street is finally going to be fixed next year.
2024?
To clarify, 2024 is utilities. Sanitary sewer and water will be reconstructed next year, and then the road and storm sewer will be in 2025.
Right.
So, two years. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is appointments. Do we have one appointment for the Park Board? Does anyone wish to make a motion? Alderman Grati.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for the mayor's reappointment of Richard Stern to the Park and Rec Board, term through 10/1/2026.
So, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we do have another Board of Public Works meeting after this. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion and a second. Oh, is there another Administration Committee too? Oh, sorry, Administration and Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassiawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.